First of all, pursuant to the provisions, appeal of decisions from the Historic Zoning Commission, pursuant to the provisions of 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. First, I'd like to hear the approval of last month's minutes or motion. Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, last month's meeting's minutes are approved. First, we have a consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on all at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Okay.
We have three items on the consent agenda this month. The first is 817 Bosco Bell Street, and that's an application for an addition for a non-contributing building. The building is a building that is more modern. The second one is 1801 Fatherland Street. That is an application for new construction of an accessory structure and a rear addition, partial demolition of an addition dormer, exterior stair, and accessory structure, and it does require a setback to the side property line. And the last item on the consent agenda is 1518 Sweetbrier in the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood, and that is an application for an addition, more specifically for a side dormer. Staff finds that all three of these items meet their respective design guidelines and recommends approval with their respective conditions that are laid out in the staff recommendations.
Okay, first, is there anyone in the audience that has an issue with any of these being on the consent agenda? Okay. I say, I guess we get your comfort and state your name, and we'll see which ones. Is that the easiest way to do it, do you think?
Or just if we know which one it is, and then we can present them.
Yeah, okay. Can you let...
1801 Fatherland Street.
1801 Fatherland, okay. Is that for both of you, or 1801 Fatherland for everyone? Okay. All right, so we will pull 1801 Fatherland off the consent agenda. So we still have on the consent agenda 817 Bosco Bell and 1518 Sweetbrier. Any questions to staff about those two? Okay.
Move.
Motion?
Move approval.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? All right, so the consent agenda is approved. Okay, so we'll move right into the new business, and we will start off with 1801 Fatherland Street.
I apologize, commissioners, because this, we weren't aware that it was being removed from the consent agenda until just now. I don't have slides to show you, but you can follow along in your staff recommendation packet.
Okay.
So again, 1801 Fatherland is an application for demolition of some, of an accessory structure that is nonhistoric and non-contributing, an existing rear addition, the rear dormer and exterior stair, and the accessory structure. And staff finds that all three of those or four of those features are not historic and don't contribute to the historic character of the house, and therefore, we're fine with their removal. The addition is located entirely behind the historic structure. It does step in from the sidewalls of the house as is required, and, let's see, sorry. It does require a setback reduction on the, oh, I'm sorry, the setback reduction's not for the side. The setback reduction is for the proposed accessory structure in the rear. The accessory structure is 20 feet by 20 feet, and typically codes requires that an accessory structure be 10 feet from the alley. In this case, they're asking that it just be five feet from the alley. Staff did find that the reduction to the rear setback was acceptable in this instance because it, there are other accessory structures. You can see in the site plan, there's one on the property to the north that also is about five feet from the rear property line, and it is common in neighborhoods like Lachlan Springs for accessory structures to be located closer to the property line than the 10 feet, and historically, you see that as well. Other than the accessory structure, the addition itself does meet all the base zoning requirements for setbacks. The height of the build, the height of the existing house is approximately 22 feet, and the addition ties into the back slope of the house at the ridge line and then continues for about a depth of 13 feet. After that point, the roof slopes up to be a maximum of three feet taller than the existing house, and the design guidelines allows for structures to be, additions to be taller than the historic house if they're more than 40 feet behind the front wall or the front of the house, which this one is. And this one's going three feet, and we allow up to four feet, or we have allowed up to four feet in the past, so staff found that to be appropriate. The existing house is approximately 43 feet 6 inches deep, including the eight-foot-deep front porch, and 31 feet 5 inches wide. The, sorry, the addition's maximum width is 27 feet 5 inches, and its maximum depth is 27 feet 4 inches, so it's not as deep as the historic structure and not as wide as the historic structure. Currently, the site has about 81 percent open space, and with the demolition of the existing additions and accessory structure and all the new construction, the amount of open space will be reduced from about 70, to about 74 percent. So it'll go from about 81 percent open space to 74 percent open space. Staff found this reduction to be appropriate in this instance because when we analyzed the neighborhood context, it looked like most of the open spaces were in the range between 60 and 80 percent, so it fell within that range. The materials are all materials that we've approved in the past, including cement fiberboard, concrete block foundation, asphalt shingle roof, there are wood brackets and other details. The windows will be aluminum clad. You know, staff just asks, as we typically do, for the final approval of all windows and doors and materials before they're purchased and installed. We didn't find any areas of open space that were, or any areas on the facades that needed a window or door opening, so we found that the project met the proportion and rhythm of openings for the, it met the design guidelines. And again, the outbuilding, which is, does, is seeking to have a setback reduction, is 20 feet by 20 feet, and it is approximately 18 feet 11 inches tall. So I think that's the highlights for the addition. We recommend approval with the conditions that we approve all final materials and specifications for the windows and doors. The applicant submit a revised right facade elevation showing the alteration of the window and door pattern, and that's the facade where the exterior stair is going to be removed, so there's going to be some window changes, which we believe are fine, but we just wanted to see an elevation showing that. And then, we seem to be missing an elevation drawing showing the outbuilding's facade that faces the house, and so we just want to see that drawing before we approve it. I'm happy to answer any questions. If not, we can, I'm not sure if the...
Any questions to staff?
Don't believe the applicant is here, so...
Okay, I'd like to open public hearing. Just please come forward and state your name and address.
Hello, Commissioner. I'm Julie Calberg at 1503 Holly Street. I emailed some comments ahead of time for you to look at regarding this property, and I'm here on behalf of myself, but also three neighbors on Fatherland Street who couldn't be here today at the 2:00 p.m. hearing. My concerns about this application are threefold. One, the actual historic facade is not really preserved in this design, since you have a bungalow with a point to the roof in the front of the house, and then this three-foot house basically attached behind it, the addition rises three feet above the ridge line, the historic ridge line of the home. So standing from the street, you do see the addition prominently by three feet. If they would just lower three feet, I would go and sit down. It would be perfectly fine, but because it's so visible from the front of the house, it really does interfere with the historic facade, and I don't want to see that in other homes in our neighborhood, because I think it is important from the street for it to be tucked behind. Also, consider that this is a corner property, so my second point is that you can see from every direction on this corner property. So it's not like an addition in the middle of a block where, okay, you can tuck it behind the facade of the front, but, you know, the neighbors can see it in their backyard. Well, this is actually prominent to everyone coming down Fatherland, and the corner adjacent there, 18. So we're concerned about the actual facade on the side, and that when you look at it, A, it looks like a giant house butted up against a smaller house, which is a little peculiar, and B, it's sort of, with the arrangement of the windows, looks sort of like a split-level home from the 1970s. There's something a little peculiar about the design of the windows that I think deserves some attention. And so I really wish you would consider encouraging the applicant to lower the addition by three feet to make it consistent with the front of the house, and therefore, we would be much happier with it. You know, I guess the third point is just that we were paying a lot of attention these days to the new development in our neighborhood, and we love all of the development that's come to Lachlan Springs, and are very pro-development in every way. We just want to see it work out so that it's a little more subtle and in turn makes our houses more valuable and encourages further development. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the commission?
Bob Orzak, resident of Lachlan Springs, 27 years, and this is just another example of these overzealous add-ons, additions to the home. As Julie already pointed out well, it's unfortunate we don't have the drawings up there, but we're all familiar with them. We all had a chance to look at them. And the back end of it were this, I was told just now that in the guidelines, there's something about 40 feet back, and nobody's going to notice. Well, that's nonsense, and it's not in the guidelines. It's in the italic portion of the guidelines, which are not the ones that were enacted when we implemented the design guidelines overlay, conservation overlay. They are not part of the permanent ones. These are the ones that staff added later on. Nobody voted on these. But again, to sit there and think you can put up 40 feet back of the facade and go up three feet and say it's not noticeable because it's 40 feet away, that's nonsense. And it is atrocious, and it is, as Julie says, it out en masse because of this. It's a very massive construction, and it's on a corner lot, so everything is visible, and it's, it, all the houses near it are not, will pale in size to it. There's just nothing like it. So how they can call that compatible and with the adjacent homes, as is called foreign to guidelines, I don't know, but it's not. So I recommend. By the way, did you have a chance to get the letter that was written by Rediscover East? You did? Okay. So you take that, you will be taking that in consideration, I hope, which they also...
Yes, I do.
I do? Well, I just have one, but be happy to show it to you. Rich McCoy was supposed to come and bring several copies. He's going on ahead. This one.
For I can read it to the record.
Rather than that. That's kind of 1801 Fatherland. Thanks. I'll get back.
Anyone else? Okay, closed public hearing. Questions to staff or con, discussion?
I have a question. Did the staff on the slope of the roof, if we, if they were to match the existing slope of the dormer in the front, how much would that lower that piece?
Let me just look at the drawings quickly.
Okay.
So if they were to, I may not be able to answer that question for you quickly, but if they were to lower the slope of the...
If they were to match the slope, the roof slope of the addition that's visible, if they were to match and parallel the dormer, that seems like that would lower that some, and I don't think it would be as obvious.
I think the dormer right now is about one foot below the ridge, if that's what you're asking, so if they were, is that what you're asking? I'm not sure if I'm 100% clear.
I'm saying if they were to match the slope of the dormer roof, that pitch would, that little point at the very top would come down, would lower it some, and I don't know whether that has to do with the clearance inside.
Because the architect's here, not here, I haven't been inside the structure to know kind of how much headroom and how much headroom that is that they need. You know, certainly, yeah, if you brought it down, brought the slope down, you could bring it down to either match the house or...
Flatten some.
Flatten it, yeah.
I think if you look at, in analyzing and or redesigning this, it's all on the fly. The eve line is matched when, if you look at the existing house, when you come back down the addition, the eve line is matched around in the rear, so that gives the appearance of a one-and-a-half-story house. The clipped gable form, you know, the 12-5 is matching that pitch there in terms of, I think, we'd be here talking, if we raise that up so that they match, I would imagine the conversation would be, the back doesn't look like it goes to the front because the eve line doesn't, I mean, that would be, that would be my opinion architecturally of what...
Well, you're looking, you're looking at the side, I'm looking at the front.
Right. And I think if you try to get, squash that down, what, the sides come out like this and up, and so the eve line, it looks even, you know, it looks more massive than the front. You've got a full, almost, you know, I'd say 45 to, close to 45 to 50-foot wide house, including the porch, and this back portion is considerably less than that on the first floor in terms of the siding and so forth that's visible.
Okay.
And that would, you know, you, if you took that roof and went like this, you'd be, you'd be making that more, and I think its appearance, especially since it is, has been pointed out by residents who've spoken, it is a corner lot, and that would, that is a very visible facade from that side.
Since the applicant or architect is not here, can we defer this, or is that something the applicant has to do?
They would have to agree, so the board would need to go ahead and take an action.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's, I think it's important to consider, because it's a 30-foot setback, so as commissioners, keep in mind that we're looking at an elevation, it's a flat elevation. So as we consider this, the nearest sidewalk is 30 feet to the front, and then, of course, you've got whatever the road right away is there. I'm not sure what Fatherland is, the other sidewalk's on the other side of the street. As this, you know, as this roof comes up, and again, it's not, we're not viewed, few, if any, of these projects are ever viewed truly in elevation, you know, we need to consider in, in the third dimension of all those corners. I don't find that the triangular piece that extends above the front elevation as architecturally offensive or not meeting the guidelines. Because it's so far back, and I think certainly on the nearest sidewalk, I'm not sure it would be seen from the street, in my opinion. From the front, of course, the side is a different story.
The side is a different story.
Yeah, that would be the only, I'm not, not knowing the grades there, if it's, you know, if it's on a hill or not, when, it would appear that it wouldn't be, and like, we have kind of set that standard to give some leeway. A lot of times, they're an addition or whatever, and they're having a hard time getting head height, and I'm not sure if this totally falls into that, but it sure seems like it could be.
From the vicinity map, it looks to be relatively flat, and you're approaching on 18th coming uphill from the south. The north is relatively flat in that block.
Any other discussion?
I'm just curious if, if we work, can we, can you make a motion to approve something and then say, like, we don't approve the three-foot-high ridge thing? I mean, is that...
We could...
Is that picking and choosing, or...
We can make a motion and have any kind of clarifications that we'd like to within it.
I'm not suggesting that we do that, I'm just curious if that's even possible.
Yeah, it's basically we'd be adding another condition.
Condition? Okay.
I think I agree with Ben that, you know, the three feet is not, if you do the geometry, you're not really going to see it from, from the street, from the sidewalk out front. You know, this is a relatively modest addition compared to a lot of the things we've seen, you know, in similarly scaled bungalows, and while I recognize it's on a corner, so it's more visible than, than most lots, you know, I think the scale of, and the massing and the roof form, you know, and the architecture is all, you know, compatible with, with the existing structure and really the, probably the structures around it. So if no one else has any other questions or comments, I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, now on to new business, 1508 Elmwood Avenue.
All right, our first scheduled item of new business today is a garage at 1508 Elmwood Avenue. It's a violation case in that it was approved by staff, and then, it was approved by staff in April of 2012, and then during a framing inspection in May, it was observed that the project had deviated from the approved drawings. And staff's determination was that as it was constructed, the structure was not subordinate to the primary structure and was not compatible with surrounding historic accessory structures. Specified in the drawing submitted by the applicant, who's not the same applicant as today, but we'll come back to that, submitted by the applicant, the structure was to be 20 feet tall with eaves at 12 feet above the finished floor level, and then on our inspection, we observed that the eaves were actually three feet higher, although the ridge was at, was at 20 feet. The eaves were higher, giving it a much shallower roof pitch. Also, the gable ridge is oriented perpendicular to the alley, excuse me, it was, it was submitted to be perpendicular. There we go. Well, in any case, it was shifted 90 degrees. The ridge was supposed to run left to right, and it's now running front to back. In addition, a side dormer, which shown on the drawings, would have faced the alley because of the rotation that dormer faces the side of the lot. Staff's determination was that the combined effect of the higher eve line, the rotated ridge line, and stacking the dormer as opposed to setting it in, all combined to give this structure an incompatible appearance and not to be subordinate to the primary structure. And staff's recommendation today is disapproval of this application to retain the construction in its current state and that it should be completed as, as originally permitted.
Any questions to staff?
When, I do have one, when the framing inspection was made, was the, how, who was notified how and when?
The builder was, was notified. That builder, originally, we had some discussions with them and, you know, how to correct the violation so that the construction could continue. It's my understanding, and today's applicant can perhaps fill in if you think it's necessary, but that contract, or the builder turned out to not have a valid contractor's license, and so they were dismissed or fired, or whatever the case may be. And the new contractor's been hired to complete the project. That new contractor is today's applicant, the previous contractor slash builder, unlicensed contractor, they were the ones that were notified on May 30th.
On the date of the inspection?
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah.
Has, is the picture indicative of the level, of the, the framing, is the picture indicative of the level of completion?
Yes.
On the 30th?
Yeah, more or less. It's sort of been, construction's been put on hold. I think the lot's been perhaps secured a little bit, but it's pretty much in the current state.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you. Is the owner applicant here? Would you like to address the commission? Please state your name and address.
My name's Larry Frank George, I'm Frank's Home Maintenance. I'm a home improvement contractor. This is Mr. Foster, he's the homeowner. When I came on board with this, Mr. Foster explained to me that he was unaware the contractor was doing anything wrong. We fully admit that the building is turned and is completely out of the design specs. And when I received all of the, all of the designs from him, I actually got four or five different designs, some from Boise Cascade, some, a few of these, not even all the ones that you see appear as the ones that I received. So I sent a email to Mr. Alexander. Mr. Foster explained to me he was unaware that the contractor's done anything wrong. When he addressed the contractor, he would simply say everything's okay, had it under control, and everything was being built to codes and not to worry. After the board told him he needed to tear off the roof and redo the structure, he heard me word of mouth and contacted me. After talking with Mr. Foster, it seems he found out after the fact that the contractor, in fact, is not a contractor at all. According to Mr. Foster, he is using someone else's contractor's license to pull permits, which is against Tennessee state law. That makes that contractor a subject to being brought before the State Board of Licensing Contractors and subject to have his license revoked. Mr. Foster has fired the contractor and hired me to complete the project. Since the other man's not a contractor, he carries no bond or insurance for Mr. Foster to file against. He's also told Mr. Foster he has no intention of rebuilding the structure. In my experience dealing with people like this, I do believe he will simply disappear since most people don't have the capital to fix a problem of this size. Mr. Foster explained to me that he simply does not have the resources to rebuild since he's sunk most of his savings already into this project. I've looked at all the plans Mr. Foster had, and I'd like to explain why I believe the structure deviated from the plans. Mr. Foster originally wanted the top of the structure to be tall enough to have a church prayer meetings in the upstairs area of the structure. However, the hand drawing said the eaves would have to be at 12 feet, and the roof would be 180 degrees turned from what you see in the picture. The first and second change appears to be caused by the stairwell. And I have pictures here, should I pass, we should pass these out now so you guys can look at them? Why don't you go ahead and just pass them out? They're just, there's rudimentary, you just have to, we got four or five copies of each. I just kind of pass them around. Those are all identical. Mr. Foster, pass one copy to each person and then go back and forth.
I can help you.
Okay, thank you. There we go. And the last sets of pictures is going to be a different address we'll look at, so set the, set the brown building to the side. That's the last ones that you'll look at. Just pass those on down, Mr. Foster.
Could I ask you to repeat the wish of the owner to have what in the upstairs?
Yes, sir. He wants to have, is where he wants to have his prayer meetings.
Okay.
It's just a getaway spot for him to have prayer meetings once a week. And in doing so, he also, he wanted a restroom up there, plenty of headroom, maybe they can get around, move around. It's not large, but it's enough for, you know, six or seven people to, you know, to sit and congregate. They all passed out? Did you pass out the brown structure too? What? Yeah, but, he only got... Yeah, but, he only got, now, this is some other structures on the street we'll also look at too. These are totally separate structures that we want to show that this does fit the neighborhood. So, and those are just single copies, you just have to pass those down amongst yourselves. Sorry for this disorganization. Now, the first and second change appears to be caused by the stairwell. If you look at the first five pictures, or in your case, it'd be the first two, the internal stairwell was on the right side of the structure. They turned the structure to make room for the stairs, and then they lifted the walls on the second floor to gain access to the top floor. In other words, if you wanted to retain the pitch of that roof line at 20 feet, you would have had to set the rafters literally on the top plate. So, if you look at the pictures of stairwell, there's no way you could get access into the upstairs. And I talked to Mr. Alexander, sorry, I talked to Mr. Alexander, if we put an external stairwell on, there just wouldn't be enough room up there at all. They'd probably have, you know, 50 square feet you could probably stand in.
I'm just not really sure, I don't understand why you're doing all this, saying all this stuff. I mean, it just, there's a violation in what got approved, I don't really know if we care why it happened.
Well, we're looking for a compromise.
Well, then you need to ask what the compromise is. I don't care about why it happened, to be honest with you.
So, you just don't want to hear me out? Okay, fine, that's fine.
I want to know why, what you're asking for.
What we're asking for is if you look at the pictures of the brown building, there's one, how far away is it, 400 feet from this one roughly? At 1204 Elmwood, if you look at the picture, it says 1204 Elmwood, that is an identical structure that that contractor built before that you guys approved. The only difference in the structure is the fact it has a wood fence beside it. Other than that, it's identical in shape. It doesn't have the dormers on it, but you can't see the dormers on that structure anyway. So, what we're asking for is that you let us build the structure as-is, let us put a fence up and match the structure that you've already approved down the street. They're identical.
Do we have a picture of the 1204 Elmwood?
This is it? Oh, that's in front of it? Oh, no.
And why, and the reason I'm going to this length is when I talked to Mr. Alexander, this contractor gave some problems on this structure also. But it is there, and it is approved, and it's just right down the street. So, we're looking at identical structures. And Mr. Foster's just not going to be able to recover his resources. And it's a hazard, as it says, and so we're asking just to let us finish it. We'll put up a wood fence and it'll match that structure perfectly.
Okay, so, you're just, you're asking that we, you just be able to continue as you are?
Continue as-is, let us finish the code process, let the codes department make sure the structure's safe, sound, and in the way it's supposed to be. And let us put a wood fence on each side of it and just match the structure that you approved right down the street anyway.
Okay.
Okay?
Any questions to the applicant?
And you're also saying that you have a mansion function?
For him to tear down the structure and rebuild it, Mr. Foster informed me that he just doesn't have the money to do it. We're probably within $9,000 to $10,000 with completion right now on a $40,000 structure.
Okay.
That it?
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. One question to staff, typically we ask for more detailed drawings than these. Did you not receive anything that was a little more detailed?
No, that's what we received. They, as Mr. George said, they are pretty similar to the drawings we received for a garage at 1210 Elmwood Avenue. Essentially, I think the original contractor just photocopied those same drawings, changed the address, and resubmitted.
Gotcha.
Do you have the history of how the one at 1210 was approved?
Well, it was approved based on those same drawings, with a 12-foot eve and a 20-foot ridge. The inspection history for that one says that it also had problems along the way. The garage is 21 feet peak to grade, the eaves are 1310 instead of 12, but okay. In this case, the grade at 1210 Elmwood is a lot flatter than it is, so although it has the same, essentially, the proportions are off in the same amount that they're off from the drawings in this one, the dormer on the one at 1508 and the difference in grade where the grade of where the garage is, is higher than where the primary structure is, combined to exaggerate the violation more than it did at 1210 Elmwood.
So, that, what we approved was the same drawings as was before?
Did the applicant at 1210 ask to be accepted as built?
Yes, more or less. I mean, it was same situation, we called it in progress or near the end of completion, but I guess made a determination based on the conditions of the site that although it was not done as approved, it was not so, it was still, it was not inappropriate.
And was that, did we vote on that?
That was a staff permit.
And was that structure not subsequent to the main structure that approved 1210?
I believe it's subordinate to the primary structure, to the primary structure to which it relates.
I have a question for staff, actually for legal counsel. Does this, does the commission, or perhaps codes department, or Metro Legal have recourse for contractors, builders, that completely disregard what's approved beyond just having them tear it down, and in this case particularly where it's an unlicensed contractor? Does Metro typically pursue any kind of legal action?
What is typically done where there is a violation, or there's a, something being built that's not consistent with what has been permitted, is that those matters are referred over to the legal department, and we work with the historic zoning staff to draw up a, or prove language that will go on a general sessions court warrant. That warrant is filed in the environmental court, and enforcement of the permit is sought there. Typically, what we're asking for when we do that is for a, some type of mandatory, or in this case, it would be a mandatory injunction to issue, mandating probably that the structure be removed and demolished because it was not consistent with what's the historic zoning commission.
So, the warrant would be with the owner?
It would be.
Not the applicant necessarily?
Not necessarily, right.
Or the builder?
That's correct. It would be, under the code, we can bring an action against an owner, and the owner is defined as the occupant or the person in control of the property. So, typically, that's going to be the property owner that we would file suit against.
Do you know, would it require the property owner to file with the state? And I'm making, trying to make this point, so we don't, hopefully, other builders are watching, and we don't, you know, continue to run into this issue, but...
They may have something, I couldn't advise that person, but they could, they may have some remedies. They probably, they may want to seek their own independent legal advice for what remedies they have against the contractor. But, you know, again, it would be, it's the pleasure of the board as to whether we would go those steps in this particular case.
Would there be any action taken with, for the contractor that allowed his name to be used to get this permit?
It's my understanding that that's a state function, that there wouldn't necessarily be any action from our standpoint. Obviously, if we know that that is happening, then we can alert the codes department so that when, if this person tries to pull permits or anything in the future that they're aware of, that perhaps it could be flagged or something like that. But I don't know that we would have any regulatory authority for that contractor. In fact, I almost certainly don't.
And did you say that it's up to this commission to ask Metro to...
Well, in this case, the process, since this was, typically, a lot of times when we see things that come through for enforcement, there are staff determinations that have been made as to it needing to be enforced based on the prior actions of the commission. In this particular case, it's a little bit different because it's actually the commission that's making the determination as to whether they're going to allow this particular structure to be approved as it is currently built. If the board decides that this particular structure is consistent with the surrounding properties and meets the guidelines, and therefore it should be approved as built, then there would be nothing further for legal to do in terms of enforcement. However, if the board decides that it is not, and the board orders that, does not give approval for the structure as-is, the board at that point could refer it over to the legal department if you'd like to do that, or you could refer it back to staff, for staff and the legal department to get together on enforcement mechanisms. So, you could, I mean, essentially, depending on what your vote is, it's probably going to dictate which way it goes.
All right, any more discussions or questions? It comes to unfortunate situation.
I mean, as the owner of the property, it's, this is a complete snow job, I mean, it, the application is what it is, I mean, and it is how it was submitted, and as I'm sure the owner was trusting, it appears the owner was trusting that somebody was taking care of business, and, you know, apparently that's not the case. The pickle we're in is, you know, this is broadcast on television and certainly isn't the first time, maybe it won't be the last time, it's like, ah, yeah, it didn't really matter what they say, just go out and build it and, you know, ask for forgiveness after the fact. That's not a, not a, not a good place for us to be in, nor the staff, so, it's, it's a tough one. It truly is.
Do we have a motion?
How close is 1210 Elmwood to 1508 Elmwood? Do we know? Three blocks or so?
It's a weird little stretch of the street where the house numbers jump. There is a dividing street between the 1200 block and the 1500 block, but it's not three full blocks.
But there is precedent.
He says it's five houses to work.
And bill like that, y'all did approve it.
I guess I have a question for staff. Staff is recommending disapproval because of the deviation from the permit. Given that the staff approved the previous design, which is, two questions. One, is this, what's been built here, in fact, identical with the exception of the side dormers, or side dormer, to the one at 1210 Elmwood? And then, secondly, can you give us your opinion on whether this, what was constructed, if the staff would have recommended approval based on the design guidelines? If this, if it was submitted as constructed?
For the second question, for 1508, we would not, I do not believe staff would have approved, staff would not have approved this, as built, because of the proportions and the eve height. To the, try to remember the first part of the question. No, I don't believe they're identical. In my measurements and based on the notes taken during the inspection of the 1210, 1210 has a 712 roof pitch, 1508 has a 512 roof pitch. That is, you know, it's just a few degrees, but it certainly adds up in perspective. Additionally, just the site circumstances are different in that the grade for the location of the accessory structures, on-site plan, they look like identical locations, but in elevation, the rear of the lot at 1508 is several feet higher than the rear of the lot at the 1200 block.
So, because of the height and the roof pitch, the current, what's built, the staff feels like does not meet the guidelines?
Correct. I think 1210, perhaps, you know, like I said, it was something that was approved at the staff level. I think we've sort of always in the process of trying to figure out what's appropriate to bring to staff, and I think maybe at one of our annual reviews, we decided from now on, something of this scale will take to the commission, whereas in the past, we might have approved it at staff. Perhaps. It's hard to say after the fact what.
The plan that was approved, or the drawing that was approved, did it contemplate a second floor use?
It did show a dormer, but that, it looks like usable space with lower knee walls. This probably has nearly knee walls that you could stand under, or, well, I could stand under.
This is one of those reasons why we always say to need those extra drawings, just to... Anyway, do we have a?
Well, there's, I mean, I will point out, there's several things at work here that are pointed out in the violation, despite how painful this might be, and as lacking as you might consider the drawings, the rear view is certainly, the gable is turned, and it's parallel with direction of travel on the alley. That's not what, anywhere close to what was constructed. And then we have the other, you know, the changes in roof pitch, and obviously the knee wall being constructed higher. Those are the things that are different from the application. You know, if the application process is not what we live by, then I think all of our cases are, you know, not, we'd just be seeing a lot of violations. And I don't think that's the way this is, this board or the staff is intended to act. I don't ignore the, and I think it does carry some weight, you know, that not five houses away, you have a garage certainly that is similar and appears, 1204 Elmwood from the alley, it appears to be a two-story, a two-story structure certainly, and I don't know how close that anybody else see the Beechwood ones. I mean, those are two-story structures. Again, the roof is turned, it's a different situation, the roof is turned, but certainly a two-story structure as appearing from the alley. Staff seems to have made the distinction that, and there is a distinction, that we don't know what the houses that sit in front of these look like. And I think, or at least from the photograph and considering the guidelines of new construction, how this garage relates into its mass and its height to the primary house is different in each one of these cases. And from what I, what I think I heard staff say is that particularly in this case, the difference here is very apparent, just as one compared to the next. The photographs from the street are, you can't entirely perceive that, but it looks like in the shadows of, can we back up, I guess, to the comparative views? Yeah, I mean, it's in the shadows, I hate to make judgment based on the 1508 Elmwood photograph. It's difficult to see, but certainly what it appears is that's a, that's a pretty tall, pretty tall piece there on the side elevation of both of those with the dormer, et cetera, so, it's a pickle.
I don't know if there's like, I mean, the applicant kind of asked for a compromise. I don't know if the compromise is to come back with, you know, a drawing that modifies the structure that we would approve versus having it basically torn down. I think that would necessitate pretty much giving up that top floor for any kind of use, but I don't think the thing got approved with some kind of use really considered personally, but I don't know, it wasn't here, but...
That would probably be their best option, but to come back with something that I propose that would be more in line, or at least something, even though it may not be exact. But I think we have to just vote on what we've got in front of us today, which is being able to approve it as-is or not approve it as-is.
I think Richard has a good idea, but we do have to give them some direction, and we do need to vote on what is presented to us. And we need to keep in mind the precedent that we're set, but I do have some sympathy that we're set, but I do have some sympathy for the situation that you're in.
A lot of sympathy.
We want to help, but our mission is to go by the guidelines and permitted permits that are pulled. So I think if we're asking them to come back, I think we need to give some direction or ask staff maybe to help them come up with a solution, or what might be able to be done at this point.
Okay. I'm not sure if we would, should vote on, if we're going to give, I would recommend that you do talk, if this is the case, if this is really the option you'd like to try now is to come back with something different that is a compromise, which probably won't still be exact a compromise, then I guess I could recommend you ask to defer it, and then you go back to staff to say, okay, we want to do something different, we're going to come back with an idea to do that. And then that way, we don't vote on what you've presented today, and Sean or Melissa, if there's some difference there, but that way, that would give them an opportunity to come back. Now, there's no guarantee that we will approve what you come back with, but that gives you an option to come back with a compromise. Is that legal? Okay.
For clarity, because we, if we disapprove it as built, doesn't necessarily necessitate it being torn down, and I know in the past, we have given some leeway for...
That's the question.
It'll trigger her, I think.
Yeah, for, give the applicant some leeway to propose an alternate solution before any legal action or before, you know, before the steps that happen after this take place, that there be some relief given or directed by the board.
Yeah, we could, that's another.
We won't file until the Historic Zoning Commission tells us to, that they want to proceed.
Okay.
So it'd be better...
We can defer it, or we can go ahead and vote it down?
So it'd be better for the applicant, if I'm understanding, for it to be deferred, is right?
From our perspective, it wouldn't matter, because if you could defer it, and if they come back and they don't have something that you all are willing to approve, then that's where we would really pick up at that point.
So if we disapprove it?
As opposed to now.
If we disapprove it right now, they'll, you'll immediately start action?
Well, if you disapprove it right now, it'll go back to the commission and they would contact us when they're ready to proceed, because they're going to be our witnesses, and you guys are the clients, so we won't, we won't file a suit until...
But it starts.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's...
Not for design, no, not for design review.
Are they app...
Okay.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to disapprove the application to finish construction of the accessory building at 1508 Elmwood on a basis that it, A, is not constructed per the permitted plans, which as constructed violates the guidelines for new construction of accessory buildings. And we'll add that if the applicant chooses, we'd like for the applicant to get together with staff to try to come up with a solution that could bring the building into conformance, and that we'll put a 60-day timeframe on it.
Second.
Okay, there was a motion, and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so the motion carries that this is disapproved, but we do recommend you, well...
Thanks for having a 60-day window.
Yeah. Okay, the next case is 1419 Holly Street.
All right. We still have Quorum here, just checking. 1419 Holly Street, this, the address may sound familiar, it was here last month. This is essentially a completely new submission. The applicant proposes to demolish an existing non-contributing building and construct a new single-family home with a detached garage. The project includes a three-foot, six-inch wood picket fence encircling the front property with a six-foot-tall wood privacy fence around the rear of the property, a side setback reduction, and a detached garage, I mentioned earlier. The setback reduction is requested only for a portion of the side porch, and staff does feel that that condition would meet the historic context. At the rear of the lot sits a circa 1950s secondary dwelling that has undergone multiple alterations. It first appeared in the Sanborn Fire Insurance Maps and City Directories in 1951. The foundation is concrete block, siding is masonite, and the roof asphalt shingle. Since it was constructed after the period of significant development for the overlay and does not contribute to the historic character in terms of style, construction method, and age, staff finds demolition to be appropriate. In the immediate context, there are homes that are mostly one and one-and-a-half story, ranging between 17 and 26 feet tall from grade. The width of the historic buildings in the area range between 30 and 35 feet, and most of the homes are centered or roughly centered on their lots. The proposed building is also one-and-a-half story. It does vary in height due to dropping along with grade. It is one foot lower than the proposal you saw last month, and staff recommends that it be reduced in height an additional foot, and that's something that the applicant has agreed to do. With this alteration, staff finds that the project is similar to the surrounding historic context in terms of its overall scale. The materials of both the home and garage are appropriate for the district and have been approved in the past. They would be things like wooden trim, cement fiber siding, the typical new construction materials that you're familiar with. Staff does recommend having final approval of materials for windows and doors and any other unknown tertiary materials. The roof shape orientation and the location of vehicular access to the garage, which is off-alley, and the proportion and rhythm of openings all are found to meet the context and the design guidelines. And to be clear, the applicant did previously present an application to build a duplex and additionally submitted a site plan showing two houses, one listed as, shown on the site plan as a future footprint. At this time, the commission doesn't have the ability to review detached duplexes, so staff has found that with the, or to approve duplexes with a narrow eight-foot umbilical connection, this report, staff recommendation for approval is only based on the current single-family home that we're reviewing today. It does not consider the possibility of any second home or rezoning of this property. And I'll go back to the site plan. Just to conclude and say that staff recommends approval of the project and setback reduction with the condition that staff provide final review, staff review final determination of windows and doors, and that the overall height of the house be lowered by one foot. With this condition, the project meets Section 2B for new construction in the Lachlan Springs Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. I do not believe, oh, the architect is here, I'm sorry.
Any questions to staff?
Sean, could you just state your statements about the duplexes?
Okay.
This is a zone duplex and a single family, so could you just...
Correct. Yes, last month, the application was to also demolish the non-contributing structure, but then to construct two, to construct a two-family dwelling designed in a way that was to read as two more or less separated structures, although they had, to me, code had a shared connection. And then in submitting this, I believe it may be in the, you know, I can't read minds, but I imagine that this is still designed in a way that should the zoning, zoning or definition of two-family structures in the zoning code ever change, room would still be, there is still room on the lot to allow that, but since that's not what is being proposed, we are only reviewing a single-family structure.
Yeah, I think the duplex, we probably don't even need to talk about that, because that's not what we're reviewing.
It's not relevant to the plans we've received.
I think for our purposes, he does not have to get rezoning.
No, no. It wouldn't have had to previously and does not now. It still does allow a single-family.
Okay, any more questions?
Just, it does have the setback reduction for the side setback for the side porch.
Okay, any more questions to staff? Anyone, applicant like to say anything? Anyone else like to speak on about this project? Yes, okay, please come forward and state your name and address again.
Hello, my name is Julie Calverg. I'm at 1503 Holly Street. I submitted comments before the meeting by email, but I wanted to bring my vigil aid with me here to you to all pass around. This is the site and the adjacent homes, and as the historic guidelines read, the adjacent homes need to be considered in this historic overlay. And the comments that I wrote to you, and I hope that you all read, point out that other historic districts in Nashville say surrounding homes need to be consistent in height, scale, and spacing. In Lachlan Springs historic, excuse me, conservation overlay, this is different. It says adjacent, and you need to enforce adjacent quite differently than you do surrounding. And unfortunately, some of the squabbles that you've seen lately, and especially, you know, regarding the scale of this project that it's come through April, May, June, and now July, we have a scale issue with this. This is essentially the same exact primary dwelling as he submitted prior months, so we're looking at the same size and scale, and we're talking about a 30-foot home. The home adjacent to it, next door at 1417, it's pictured in this visual for you, is 17 feet tall. This would tower 13, 14 feet over the house next door, twice as tall. That is not consistent with the adjacent home. You look down the hill from the block, across the street, uphill, the 1500 block, all of these homes are under 26 feet. Please look at how this violates the section on scale, the section on rhythm, because when you're looking up a hill, I know that width is important and rhythm, but height is important, especially on a grade, on a hill, that you, the Holly Street trolley used to go down this hill, and all the little historic cottages all look the same, and they're very charming. If you put this sore thumb in the middle of a 30-foot tower, it will disrupt the rhythm of the entire block in two directions. It's a corner lot, it's highly visible. Please, please, listen to the neighbors that have been so frustrated for so long, trying to keep the scale this small so that we don't lose home value for our homes. It's unfair. We all stay within our historic scale, this needs to be consistent. So please look at these drawings, look at the illustration in these photographs of how short and modest all of the cottages along Holly Street are, not only in the 1400 block, but in the 1500 block, and please know that this is ridiculous. It is twice as tall as the house next door. I do not want this, the neighbors in all of those homes photographed that I'm showing you do not want this. Please listen to us, we have been very vocal and wanting something that will fit into our neighborhood as per the historic guidelines, but this is in violation of scale, rhythm, and especially height, and it is calling on the adjacent homes, not some loose surrounding home definition that calls the East End. We're talking about adjacent homes. I've given you pictures of the adjacent homes in five, in four directions, five houses each way, they're all very short, modest cottages. Please consider those as the adjacent homes when comparing to height, rhythm, and scale, and disapprove the height of this. Please encourage the applicant to reduce it at least four more feet so that it fits within the context. That's all I'm asking, and I really want to get back to taking care of my baby and not coming to meetings, I know. I would just like the height of this home to be within reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bob Horzak again. Agreed totally with what Julie said. This particular structure goes beyond anything that's within a two-block area of that section of Holly Street. And being that it's also a corner property, it's going to stand out even more so. And I believe we've already broken precedent with the approval of 1801 Fotherlin, and this one will just add to that and make things even worse, and it's just going to open the floodgates of some more of these infills where people will just ignore, in my opinion, the guidelines and the compatibility issues and the mass issues and so on. It just, it keeps proliferating. I brought this up at the last month's meeting where we have several, where I sent a letter, hopefully you've got it, that I sent, where I cited some of the recent approvals over the last two, three years, where buildings have been approved, infills, that have absolutely no scale whatsoever. There's a three, two, two-and-a-half story house right across the street from me in Wensley Drive, excuse me, where all the cottages are even smaller than the ones on Holly Street, and this thing towers above them. And then I think it was page 11 in the design guidelines, you look in there and they show an illustration showing all these little bungalows, and then there's four square in the middle of it, and it says incompatible. I believe that's what it says, something like that, but it says non, should not be approved. Yet it got approved. And to me, this started this thing, and now we seem to just keep it going on and on with no regard whatsoever to what's going on in this area, and I think this is just a sad place to be in history of the conservation overlay for Lachlan Springs East End. And I have a discussion with one of the Rediscover East people, and he said compatible is, it can change. Well, compatible and adjacent, as Julie pointed out, are totally different. Compatible in that particular section is nothing over a story and a half, they're all considerably smaller, whereas he was talking about East End where in some blocks, you can go in there and you've got one, one-and-a-half, two, and even three-story houses all mixed in there. It's a totally different animal. So hopefully, we will disapprove this one, and there are so many good examples in our neighborhood where people were able to build and keep the scale tolerable, and now all of a sudden, we're starting to get this stuff, they're pushing the envelope, and it makes us have to come to these meetings every month, and I'm for one getting a little tired of it as well, so I hope we can stop this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Mark Medley. I reside at 1414 Holly Street, basically across the street from 1419. I've lived in East Nashville since 1987. I've lived on Forest Avenue, I've lived on Ordway Place, and I've lived at 1414 Holly since 1997. My point is, Holly Street is perhaps the most picturesque street in all of Lachlan Springs, from the Five Points all the way to Shelby Golf Course. This house is out of context with that, and it's also out of context, apparently, with the Historic Preservation Code. So I urge you to consider carefully about the approval of this structure. As the lady pointed out, there is a rhythm, there is a scale. It is a very, very picturesque street, and we, as the homeowners on this street, really are very disappointed to see this huge thing on a corner lot in our neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Bill Lewis. I live at 1416 Holly Street, and we're here once again to look at plans for what is basically the same house you disapproved at your previous meeting. Obviously, your decision will determine whether a developer can build the proposed house, but the question isn't just about a structure, it's about people. The question is, does the Lachlan Springs Conservation Overlay still protect existing property owners and their lifetime of investment, their quality of life, from being harmed by inappropriate development? Does the overlay protect people like the gentleman who lives at the adjacent house, the house next to 1419? He's a World War II veteran. He manned a 50-caliber machine gun during the Battle of the Bulge. He played a small part in defending our freedom, but that's more than I've ever done, and it's probably more than most people have ever done. it's probably more than most people ever do. He came home, bought a house, and raised his family. He worked hard, and he played by the rules. The developers should have to play by those same rules. This project breaks those rules. The proposed house would loom at least 13 feet over this veteran's adjacent home. The proposed house would be nearly twice as high as his adjacent house. Because the land at 1419 slopes upward, the new house would tower over its next-door neighbor and nearly, and all nearby houses. This veteran's home would be in a constant shadow every day until noon, no morning sunlight. For someone who's mostly housebound, that is serious harm. Next to this proposed house, this quiet gentleman's home would look like a Tinker Toy. This is the kind of harm the Metro Council was determined to prevent when it created the overlay. The council chose language with a specific meaning. The law created by the council says this, "New buildings must be the same number of stories in height, and a height which is compatible with adjacent buildings." The law says adjacent buildings. It does not talk about being compatible with buildings in the vicinity. But that's the basis of your staff's recommendation. They're interpreting the law where the law does not give them that authority. The word adjacent is not open to interpretation, adjacent means next door. I believe any judge would understand the clear intent of Nashville's legislative body. Your duty is to enforce the council's intent. You should reject this harmful proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm John Summers. I live at 5,000 Wyoming Avenue. I previously lived at 1800 Holly Street, but I served as councilman for the 6th District when the Conservation Overlay was created. And I'm here to tell you that it was very specifically my intent, that properties adjacent were the standard, and that you weren't supposed to increase the height by five feet. I'm quite frankly surprised that later guidelines did not follow this language. And as an attorney, I can tell you that adjacent means something very specific. And so you have clear language that directs you today, I think, to disapprove this application. And I would certainly urge you to do that. I think this needs to be put in a little bit of your context. And I know you all serve, and you all try to find the best answer. I've served with at least one of you all on the Planning Commission, I've been in the council. I know you all try to find the compromise and where, you know, things can work well. But I think we're rapidly reaching, well, it's a crescendo in terms of, as the staff tries to use the flexibility that it has to accommodate folks, we're getting more and more exceptions that start playing outside, I think, what was the standard in terms of what I certainly intended when I passed this overlay. And I think that, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I think that time has come that we need to have some conversations between the commission, the staff, and the neighborhoods that have these overlays as to kind of where we're going, because everybody wants to have some certainty, the neighbors don't want to have to come up here and fight these things. And any developer, any architect, I mean, you want to be able to do things within the guidelines. Obviously, if you're the owner, and this is a spec property, you're trying to get as much as you can, you know, because you're, a lot of square footage has to go into value of a house in terms of resale. But, you know, what's made these neighborhoods unique is their historic homes, and we need, and the whole purpose of creating the Conservation Overlay was to make sure that we had consistent development, and having a house that, you know, towers over 13, 14, whatever the feet is, is really not, I think, what was intended. I know that's wasn't what I intended when I lived on Holly Street and passed this overlay. So I think you have clear language that gives you the ability to disapprove this, and then I think there needs to be some, a greater discussion in terms of where we are, how we've progressed in terms of historic neighborhoods, so that, you know, now that they're popular, now that, you know, you know, we couldn't find people that wanted to develop in these neighborhoods 30 years ago. We all, it was, it was all a matter of restoration. It wasn't much of a matter of additions or new construction, whatever. And so I think as, as the dynamics have changed, the real estate market, maybe there's time to have the conversation so we can maybe minimize the conflicts that we seem to be increasingly having in terms of how we interpret the guidelines and how we do infill construction. I appreciate your time and appreciate your service, thank you. But again, I ask you to disapprove this, because I think you've got clear language in terms of adjacent, that has a clear meaning in terms of what's expected, in terms of a five-foot limit in terms of the house next door.
Thank you. Okay, closed public hearing, discussion?
Just clarification on the five-foot limit that Councilman Summers mentioned.
As far as adjacent?
Just looking in the guidelines now. The height of new buildings should be constructed in the same number of stories into a height which is compatible with the height of adjacent buildings. It doesn't say five feet in particular or any specific number, it says compatible with the height of adjacent buildings.
There is a definition in the zoning code for adjacent. And I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't share that with the board, given all the discussion about what adjacent means. 1704050 Rules for Construction of Language, subsection A says, "General, all provisions, terms, phrases, and expressions contained in this zoning code shall be construed in order that the true intent and meaning of the Metropolitan County Council may be fully carried out." Then, if you drop down to 1704060, under definitions, subsection B, general terms, adjacent is one of the first few terms that's described, and it says adjacent means nearby property touching the property lines of a parcel being considered, and including property across the street.
Thanks. Any more discussion at all?
I guess I'd like to ask staff, I mean, I suppose by, by the staff's recommendation that a one-foot shorter home, you feel, under these guidelines, is compatible with the height of the adjacent buildings as defined by the code. I guess my question is, do you find this project at one foot shorter compatible, as the guidelines call for, with the adjacent buildings?
Yes, that's correct, that's what we find.
Okay. And that difference was, how many feet again? The difference between the adjacent houses?
I, I don't have the height of the adjacent structures with me today. I'm not the one that prepared the staff recommendation. But based on Calvert's testimony, she said that that was 17 feet. We're asking that this one be 26 feet. But again, following Ms. Jones' definition of adjacent, we'd also be taking the structure across 15th Street, which would be the stone cross-gabled cottage on the upper-right photograph there. I don't know the height of that structure. And then, of course, the structure on Woodland Street as well. Ms. Ziegler might have that information, but I don't have it with me today.
And just to be clear, it's not my definition.
Correct. It's the definition.
Thank you. That clarification?
Can I request future cases that we try our best to determine? And I'm not, I'm just thinking, given the nature of the discussion, of the definition of adjacent versus nearby, I think it is really important for us to know as best we can from the staff what the height of adjacent property is.
Certainly adjacent, I think it was pointed out that, I believe, many of the guidelines now say surrounding as opposed to directly adjacent. And I will, on that matter, add, I'm very familiar with Germantown neighborhood, having lived there for a long time, but I'm also familiar with East Nashville, is, following that guideline, I think, you know, as some of the more wealthy individuals in Nashville who chose to build on the east side, whether it be Lachlan Springs or any other neighborhood, might not have been able to build their house by that guideline. There's some really large houses next to some cottages that certainly exist, and they're very, it's not the norm, but certainly that is the case on, on many properties, more than a handful of properties throughout the east side and in many of our historic districts. Does that mean this one should be approved? That's not what I'm suggesting. I'm just saying that, you know, it needs to, we'll bring our good judgment on this and every other case. Another thing I would like to, in terms of looking at height, looking at this project, is I think the eve height is something important, important to consider here, as well as how the roof shape is oriented with its, and how that's going to affect the neighboring property. If you consider how the sun rises and sets, and that these east and west elevations, I think it's certainly appropriate, both based on the context and also the amount of light that would be, if the roof were rotated, would be occluded by the adjacent house. This is the proper orientation for that roof and the path that the sun would take. And earlier in the morning, it would be, you know, kind of coming down the slope of the roof onto the neighbor's house, and, you know, zoning was established, light, air, and that's some of the basis for why zoning laws were established. So I think in this case, that certainly is definitely the right orientation for the roof.
I have two other questions.
You know, real quick, I think Legal had one comment.
I just said, I was just going to say that there was, I think there's a gentleman that wants to be recognized and looked at me for authority to speak. Of course, I'm not the chair, obviously, but if the public hearing is closed, then the board would need to reopen that so that individuals could be allowed to speak if they so chose to allow that. And that's the pleasure of the board, whether you reopen it or not.
I could open it, but let me, let's keep the discussion going since it's going well right now, just because it's moving. But so, give me a moment, and let's see how it goes.
Do you have the definition of height as a zoning ordinance? I ask because some municipalities measure height to the midpoint of the sloped roof, but...
It's ambiguous throughout the zoning code. And the building code and zoning code is ambiguous in terms of who and how and what you mean?
There is no definition of height, per se. There is a definition of height controlled plane, but I don't know that that would be helpful to the boards. That's not something that's a, that you need to specify. Yeah, it doesn't look like you're reviewing things. I agree too, but it doesn't look like you're reviewing anything, or where this would be helpful. It says high-controlled plane means an imaginary inclined plane that slopes over lots of structures, and I think high structures on that line, on that line. The plane begins above grade at the highest establishment, at the highest, I'm sorry, the plane begins above grade at the height established by the tables in 1712020B and 1712020C, and slopes inwardly at the slopes established by those tables. And since you're not looking at those tables to make your determination, I don't know if that's helpful to you.
I'm making a motion to get this thing off square, whatever. I'm sorry, yeah, that's fine.
Well, and before I open up public hearing, I would think I would be remiss, would the applicant like to say something too now? See, if I'm going to open up public hearing, I should probably give you an opportunity to speak as well.
Yeah, before I open the public, I thought it'd be better to at least give the applicant a chance to speak too. Thank you. I was just requesting if we could...
Right, to allow him to speak.
I was just asking staff if we had pictures from the last, showing the context up and down Holly in the 3D, it might help, because the grade is so dramatic. This is, you know, in designing the home originally, understandably, the house to the west is a one-story house, but depending on where you look at the house across 18th or 15th, it is three stories on 15th and two, two stories, a story and a half on Holly. So we're at 28 feet, and we, staff recommended 27 feet. I don't think our ridge will be anywhere near the adjacent home. If there's a magic number in mind, I'd be more than happy to talk about that. Again, because the grade is so dramatic up Holly, we were trying to kind of split the difference between the height of the home itself with the adjacent, you know, kind of bridge, bridge the gap between the two homes. And understandably, you know, it is a small home on the west side, we were trying to, you know, have a happy medium. And I was just asking staff if we had the 3D context that I submitted last month to kind of show, because that's all relevant, and actually, it's a foot taller than what we submitted this time. So that's all I was going to bring up.
Okay. Any questions to the applicant while Holly's here too? With that not being here, which might be relevant to the case, would it be something you'd be interested to bring back, to have that shown, or if it's something that could be helped clear the case up, that would show that, if they don't have it, I'm not sure if they're finding it or not.
We don't seem to have it in the file. Was it something, was it, did we have electronically last month, or something you submitted last month?
It was a part of the submission, yes. I just, I just thought that'd be a good vigil aid to help.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm saying, would you want to bring it back next month with that, I guess is, it seems like that's...
Torture.
But it's up to the applicant, if you...
I was waiting hours.
Well, anyway, I'm just giving you that option if you're...
Thanks.
Okay, yes, please, come forward.
Hi, thank you. Once again, I'm Bill Lewis, 1416 Holly Street, directly across the street from the proposed project. And now I'm really confused because both the staff and the applicant have contradicted the application, what I read. The application says 30 or 31 feet. There's nothing about 26 feet in that application. If you lower it...
That may have been the June submission?
No, that's the one I just read that was for this one, and everybody else on this side of the room is thinking 30 feet too. So it's a concern, and that's the information that we're working from. And we're concerned that if you approve this, that's what you're really approving. I don't know what a verbal representation is worth in one of these meetings, but what's on paper, what I read said 30 feet. Thank you.
Is it open, is it?
Is there any clarification? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't see you come back up.
Julie Calvert, 1503 Holly, you have my vigil aid still? Have you all gotten a chance to take a look at that? So those are adjacent homes to this property as defined by legal, as defined by the world.
Are all of these adjacent homes?
Yes, those are five houses in each direction from this property.
Across the street?
Across the street, uphill, across the street, downhill, adjacent to the, to the east, adjacent to the west. All of twen, there are 17 homes that you are looking at there, all under 26 feet. And we really don't want funny math here, or he said, she said about these heights. What's on your website, on this application, in your packets that you're looking at, is a height from 29 to 31 feet, I believe it says. And the historic staff said we'll reduce it one feet and approve that recommendation. And we, the neighbors, are asking, pleading, begging, please ask the applicant to lower it further than the one-foot recommendation. Lower it to 26 feet, that would be fantastic, there's a number for you. Lower it to as tall as the tallest house on the block. That would make sense. That's all we're asking, it's reasonable, and it's within the guidelines, so I think you can quote section 2B, 2, 3, I don't know if it's 6 or 10, look at your statute, you can scratch them off. Please, please go by the law here, and please go by the... Please, please go by the law here and please go by the photographic evidence that we've brought before you. And no more subjective discussion about what, how tall this is. There's a 31-foot home right now being erected on Woodland Street that looks ridiculously tall. And I know what that looks like standing from the street. I walked past it yesterday. I know what 31 feet looks like. It is too tall for our block. It's too tall for full-grown trees. And he's taking out nine full-grown trees, magnolia trees that have been around for 100 years, chopping those down to put something just about as tall there that's just plaster. Please, 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 look at our visual aid and listen to what we're saying. We really wish, wish the best for this and a compromise can be made, but I think you hear what I've said. Thank you.
Can you help me out on the 20, the 26-foot?
The, the staff says in their recommendation that the adjacent homes range between 17 and 26 feet. I'm quoting them. The house next door is 17 feet. So at least put it within the adjacent definition. Adjacent homes are 17 to 26 feet. That's what I've given you photographs of. Do something within 17 to 26 feet and I think you're in the letter of the law. Anything else, I think you're threatening it.
Thank you.
And okay, now, just on that point, Councilman, and I definitely want you to come talk as well, but Sean, can you, is it 26 feet from the first floor and then there's three foot of grade?
It looks like that that was the initial, the height in the staff recommendation was based 27 feet from finished floor level, two feet of foundation, it would be 29 feet. So I guess we are asking it to be reduced an additional foot. I did find the heights of adjacent structures. This is from the, yeah, city helicopter laser height measurements taken for the planning department. The adjacent structure at 15, excuse me, 1417 is shown as being 21.4 feet tall. The adjacent, adjacent but across 15th Street, per the definition, is 25.78 feet tall. Across Holly Street, 23.8 feet tall. So I think that's where our numbers on this surrounding adjacent context came from.
And that's from grade?
Yes, as measured by the planning department.
Yeah, so these...
And again, that's sort of where the definition of the height control plane comes into play when there's an average of...
Okay. Councilman, I'm going to have to close it after you, but please...
Thank you, I'll be real brief. Clearly, the design of this structure is to try to leave open the option that they can build another house in the back of this lot later on. I know that has nothing to do with it, but, but I think you can look at the design and see they're maximizing height, because they have a whole lot more lot that they can, you can build on and have a larger structure. So, I mean, it's not an issue that you're constrained, that you have to have this height. You know, the question is, is compatibility and what was the intent of the overlay and the intent of the overlay was to make sure that structures were compatible in terms of size, scale, and scope and everything, you know? And again, I agree with Commissioner Gee, you know, that, but that's, that's, that's the white elephant in the room, is that he's trying to design this, get the height so he can build another house back there. The overlay, the overlay supersedes the base zoning. And I don't think, in my opinion, first of all, I don't think the council is going to approve it, but secondly, I don't think you can approve two houses on a lot anyway, even if the council were to give the authority not have the umbilical cord, because you don't have that pattern out there in terms of 19, 20, 30 homes.
Yeah, we, and I appreciate that, but we, yeah, we're...
I understand, but you're trying to balance out...
Well, it's not, it's not that...
But I just want to make sure, you know, that was the issue, because that's kind of what we're working around here.
Yeah, and I understand.
And the applicant has all sorts of room he can use in this lot if he needs to get the square footage, you know, for this property.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'm in it.
Point of clarification, I'm mentioning the 27-foot to the ridge height to the finished floor.
Finished floor to ridge height.
Finished floor to ridge height. It's noted as 28 feet and there's a chimney feature in the center of the home that is taller, that's dimensioned separately. I think staff is averaging the grade between the left and right of the house and taking an average.
Well, we never consider chimneys to be part of the height or part of the zoning envelope. Codes doesn't either, so we follow that lead, so...
And I didn't bring it up between now, but the future site plan that was put in was on Russell, not this one. The owner only wants to build a single-family home. So we're only, the only obligation is for a single-family home and a detached garage.
Okay. Closing public hearing.
Could I motion?
A sec, hold on, I can't second.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay. It's closed. All right. We've got some more information. Do we have any more discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion. You're going to love this. I move approval based on a condition that the height not exceed adjacent properties.
Discussion or second? Second?
Can you make a specific one?
It says adjacent is defined in the zoning book and staff and legal need to figure out what that is. Our job is to pick, go by the law and the law says adjacent properties.
But I haven't heard a second if I can comment, but guidelines don't specifically state that it shouldn't be any higher than adjacent. It says compatible with. I heard the councilman state specifically that the intent of the guidelines, when put in place, was a compatible meant within five feet. And so I don't, I don't necessarily, I mean, and there's no funny math. I think it's, to a great degree, a matter of opinion. These are all my neighbors, so as you all know, when your neighborhood comes up here, it's always very difficult when we, when we have to make these kind of judgments. You know, if it was within five feet of the adjacent properties, directly adjacent to this home is a 25.78-foot home. Perhaps the motion could be amended to be no more than 30.78 feet, if we're, you know, going to meet the intent of the guidelines.
But the five-foot is not in any document, is it?
No.
No, that's just a...
Public hearing is closed. Compatible is compatible and we have a motion on the floor.
Yes.
So we do not have a second yet?
Restating, restating.
I think I know the intent, but that is not what has been, that is not our, the application as it is. That would ask them to reduce, if we were, if we were going to go with the motion, then the direction of the approval height of this proposed construction would be what?
I think, I think what we probably have to do is, if no one is going to second the motion, then what is it, the second motion?
It dies for lack of, the motion's going to die for lack of a second if it's not seconded.
Okay. So is there any second from anybody? Make sure. Okay. So the motion dies because no second. Now, can we discuss or do we, can we get a motion that's...
I'll move approval with staff recommendation.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll have a second and then I have a question.
A second with a question?
Yes. Could staff please just clarify the height of the proposal? The height of which it would be with the one-foot reduction? And whether that height is measured from the finished floor or from grade?
Thank you. I'll give, I'll give it both ways. The, from grade, from grade, the proposal is...
But it's on a slope, so is that average grade or, or worst case?
Taken at an average. Well, from the, the highest corner, which is where elevations typically take, would be 29 feet from grade to the highest point. That would be 14-foot eve. From the finished floor, it would be 27, as that's submitted. So we were asking each of those be essentially reduced by one, so that the total height from grade would be 28 feet, 26 feet from finished floor height to peak. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and an answered question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we have three, four, and two, okay. So, motion carries.
I kind of lost the final motion on that.
The vote was...
Four to two.
Yeah, four, three to, three to two.
Legal, make sure I understand too.
I vote, and when there's a tie, is what I've always understood. Okay. Okay. Call question and hand vote?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, I better say what. All in favor, please raise your hand by a single fine. Okay. All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Okay. 1903 Linden Avenue.
I believe we skipped one, yeah.
Sorry, I apologize. Yeah, I apologize for that. 1601 Russell Street.
The way, I need to go back a little bit. You have to have four affirmative votes. I was trying to count the votes, I was trying to figure out who didn't vote, but you, you vote in the event of a tie, if it's, if the tie needs to be broken and there's, but in this case, you would have to vote anyway because you have to have four affirmative votes to, commission of the board.
Oh, okay.
If you, I mean, four affirmative votes to carry the motion. That's what the rules say.
Okay, okay.
It says, let's see, the chair shall vote in the case of a tie or if the requisite four concurrent votes have not been met. Okay, so I'm sorry, I wasn't quite ready for that question when it came up.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay.
So you'll need to probably do it again?
Revote?
Barre again?
Well, it got voted down.
It got voted?
It didn't pass. Because he didn't, what is that, can we just revote?
Well, to, to...
We'll just revote.
The motion itself, whether the motion is to approve or to disapprove, in order for the motion...
To carry.
To carry, it takes four votes. Does that make sense?
So it didn't carry?
So it didn't carry either way.
I got you. All right, all right.
Can it be re-voted on?
Yeah, it just has to be re-voted.
Right, because Mr. Tibbs didn't vote in that last one, is that correct?
I'm just making sure we're not doing anything wrong.
Right, no.
And one, do I do, do I need to make the motion or just do a, do a call?
It probably, the cleanest thing would be to make the motion, get the second, and take the vote.
Ben's going to make the motion.
I'm on, what's your address then? 1419 Holly Street.
So I move approval of 1419 Holly Street as meeting the conservation guidelines.
Any questions for attorney? Do you have a vote?
I can't, I can't really...
Yeah.
I can't really, I can't really address in this context.
She's told us that we can do this, so we're going forward.
Whatever that means. I don't think we can.
Okay. Let's, we'll give it a shot.
I'll move approval, tell me the address.
1419 Holly Street.
1419 Holly Street as meeting the conservation of late guidelines with staff recommendation.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
To, to give clarity to the board, there is no action of the board unless that action has four votes. So what happened a minute ago was a non-action of the board according to the rules. Right.
Okay. Thank you.
We just had an action though.
Now we do.
Now you have action.
Okay. 1601 Russell Street. Yeah, do you mind if we finish this one? I'm sorry.
At 1601 Russell Street, there is a contributing house. It is also in the Locklin Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The house was constructed circa 1914. In June, you may recall, the Historic Zoning Commission disapproved an application to construct a second dwelling attached to this red, to the existing structure. Staff find that the attached dwelling, in the manner it was proposed, did not meet the design guidelines. The applicant is proposing to remove an existing rear porch and construct a new addition at the rear of the structure and to construct a side dormer addition. The applicant also proposes to construct a new accessory building. The new side dormer, this always happens, it shows up better on your screens, I'm sure, than it does on the PowerPoint. The new side dormer will be on the right side of the house and will be largely obscured behind an existing side gable projection on that right side. It will sit in from the wall of the existing gable by four feet. The footprint of the rear addition will be 84 square feet in area, which is roughly half the size of the existing rear porch that is to be removed. The roof of the addition will match the height and location of the existing porch roof, and the foundation of the addition will set in from the sides in a manner similar to that of the existing addition and will actually sit six inches lower than the house foundation, allowing there to be a trim band at the floor level and the floor, finished floor levels will match. The new accessory building will be one-story tall with a 400-square-foot footprint. The total height will be 19 feet with eaves at 10 feet from grade. This scale is subordinate to the historic house and compatible with other accessory buildings nearby in the vicinity. On the site plan, you'll see the new accessory structure is proposed to be located in the rear right corner of the property, 10 feet from the right property, side property line, and five feet from the rear property line. For this location, the applicant is requesting a reduction of the rear setback from 10 feet to five feet. This location, as proposed, would be typical of the location of historic accessory structures and staff finds that that location does meet Guideline 2B3 and 2B8. The materials of both additions and accessory building will be smooth cement fiber board siding with wood trim, fiberglass asphalt shingle roof. There is a metal awning roof over the vehicle doors of the garage. We're asking the applicant to submit final material and design specifications for windows and doors and roof color, but otherwise, staff finds the materials to meet the design guidelines. Staff recommends approval of the side dormer addition, rear addition, and new accessory building with the conditions that the applicant submit final material, design specifications for windows, doors, windows and doors of the addition and accessory structure and that staff approve roof color. With these conditions, staff finds a proposal to be compatible with the historic structure and to meet the applicable design guidelines.
Any questions to staff? Okay. Does the applicant like to say anything about the project? Open public hearing, does anybody like to speak about the project? Closed public hearing, have discussion or a motion?
Is, I guess, the use on this, we've got some correspondence from neighbors about the double vehicular access from the alley. And my, my question about use here, or maybe it's more about use, is this an existing commercial use or is it commercial, is MUN zoning? Am I, I'm maybe going off memory from previous mixed-use zoning?
Pardon one second, I think I have that right here. Yeah, it is, no, this is Zoned R6. Across the street is MUN.
I'm mistaken, misremembering from previous meetings, sorry, excuse me. And I guess that, is that normal? You know, appropriate, given the guidelines would be the question. I think that the correspondence is raised and that I'll in turn raise for the record.
And do you mind repeating exactly your concern? Is your concern about how the alley is used?
Well, there's two, there's two vehicular accesses to the lot and then the park, you know, parking is closer into the, to the, you know, there's a garage close...
I understand.
You know, how many cars are we parking behind?
Two curb cuts.
Yeah, I mean, it is at the alley, so I certainly would, I'm not as concerned as you would be, but a new curb cut on the sidewalk, I just, just curious. And it was a concern raised, but in correspondence that we received, whatever view.
You could almost orient that garage the other way to accommodate that, I guess there's a reason why they didn't want it.
Attorney right. Pardon me, my interruption, but I believe that that second drive is gravel, I don't know if that makes a difference to you or not. Staff didn't find it to be incompatible. Did not.
I'll make a motion to approve based on staff recommendations.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. We had a request from one of the commissioners to take a break. If we could just make it really quick, let's do like, just try to get back in five after four.
So, 1903 Linden Avenue. This proposal includes two parts. One is an alteration to an existing right side, nonhistoric addition, and part two is a two-story addition that wraps to the rear left corner. The right side of the home has an existing nonhistoric port cochere with an uncovered deck above. The proposal is to reconstruct this element as a first-floor open side porch. The alteration will improve a nonhistoric element and meets the design guidelines in terms of material, location, and design. The left side addition will be two stories that wraps the rear corner of the house behind the existing side porch. According to the design guidelines, an addition should be situated at the rear of the building in such a way that it will not disturb either the front or side facades. There have been cases where the commission has approved side additions alone and a few cases where they have approved additions that wrap around the rear corner, as is proposed here. At the most recent annual review of cases, the commission expressed concern with approving additions that extend to the rear and to the side while wrapping the corner and thereby changing the form of the house. At that time, the commission determined that corner wrap additions do not meet the design guidelines, particularly design guideline 2B2A. This is similar to the commission's frequent requirements that additions not alter the original roof form of a building. Since this is a two-story house, an addition that wraps just one level would allow the original form to remain evident. In addition, the existing side porch would greatly obscure the visibility of a one-story addition. Staff recommends removal of the left side addition on the second level and the use of a bay to accommodate the stairwell on the second level, as long as the addition remains, as long as the addition remains below the existing eve. The addition meets the design guidelines in terms of scale, roof shapes, setback and rhythm of spacing, proportion and rhythm of openings, materials and known materials. Or, sorry, that was a repeat. Final staff review of materials, including windows, doors, post, color of the fabric awning, railings, and trim is recommended. So, in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the conditions that, one, the applicant provide information about the material, design dimensions of masonry, foundation, windows, doors, roofing, truman railings, and two, the right rear addition only wrap at the basement and first floor levels with a bay on the second level to accommodate the stairwell, so long as that bay, the entire addition below, and the bay and the entire addition stays below the existing eve line. With these conditions, the project meets the design guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. Happy to answer any questions?
Yeah, any questions to staff?
I believe the applicant is here.
Okay, would you like to say anything?
Manuel Zeitlin, architect, and although I'm not adjacent to this property, I live two doors down the hill from it, at 1919 Linden. The, we've been working back and forth with staff for, I guess, about five or six months on this project. The first design did had a brick addition with a hip roof coming off the side and wrapping the rear that really was matched the existing house, but the initial input I got was that they'd much prefer it to, I mean, the goals of, the goals of the guidelines are to appear that it can be removable in the future, that it's subservient to the main house, and that it clearly looks new as compared to an extension of the original house. And I certainly agree with the concept of coming straight back from the house and would have done that, except there's an 18, 18-inch diameter oak tree right behind where we're showing the rear deck. So, we basically did, brought the addition out as far to the south as we could without, you know, getting into the root system of that tree. So, if we went any further to accommodate their spatial needs, we would have to take the tree down, which was a real design, you know, which is a real treasure on that, on that lot. The other thing that wasn't, we had submitted some contextual photos, but the two houses, including mine, but as you go down the hill, both have two-story wraparound additions on them. One of them, I think, dating probably from the 30s or 40s, on the house, on the adjacent house to it. So, what, the moves we made in terms of trying to let this addition look more subservient and, and, and look like it's removable was we brought the roof of the side addition down below the eve line of the existing hip roof, and that was something that Tim suggested. We also broke, basically a reveal, like about a 12-inch reveal where the new addition meets the existing brick house, just when they come into contact with each other to have a clear break between the addition and the original house. And we changed materials to be hardy panel, not hardy plank, but hardy panel, where we have scored panels, so the scale's compatible with the house, but it's clearly, clearly a different era. So, you know, we felt like we've done a lot of steps to try to meet the intent of the ornets, but also work with the site conditions and the context. And I believe in your file, there should be letters from neighbors on each side of the house in support of the addition as it's designed.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the applicant? Thanks, Manuel. Okay, anybody in the audience like to say anything about the project? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion or motion?
Question for staff on, to make sure I understand what the recommendation is. From the draw, from the drawings that are submitted, you were asked, the staff recommendation is that, and I know we're not analyzing the plan, but that the bath on the second floor would be moved internal to the house? Is that, would that be the planned sort of adjustment based on what the staff's recommendation is?
Let me just look at the plan for a second, sorry.
Not that, that we're concerned with the bathroom itself, but that I understand what might happen if, what we're proposing.
Sure.
Can we reopen? Can I move to reopen the public hearing?
I was working with Robin and Tim on it, so she might not be familiar, but the, but yeah, the idea would be that the, I think we both showed a, an extension for a playroom and the bathroom on the side, and then the stair coming down, so the, so the kids aren't dependent on just the central stair, they've got a second way off the second floor, and the conversation was, you know, given the context of the house, immediately next to this is really close to the property line, so you don't really have a view of this side addition, you know, a clear view of the side addition, that, once you come, their idea of suggestion of just allowing a stair to come out the side, once you've done that, you block the view of the rear corner of the house anyway from the street. So, there's really not a significant, in my opinion, there's not a significant difference going ahead and allowing that addition between that-
One versus two stories, I, it sounds like there's a-
There'd be a second, they'd allow this, like, they're saying a bay to come out for the stair to come out on the side of the second floor, go down into a two-story first addition, so all of a sudden you'd have a two-story, you know, a wider mass at the first floor than a stair coming down into it, so you've already blocked that rear corner anyway with the stair.
Things to pull this down, right? I'm trying to understand.
And what's the, what, are there changes to this elevation that we're saying?
Yeah, well, they have, the staff is recommending that, for the most part, the second story portion of the side addition be eliminated and just, just allowing a second story portion, which would be designed, we would, what we're asking for as a bay, to allow for a stairwell going up. So, for the most part, eliminating the second story portion of the addition, with the exception of allowing for this stairwell bay.
So, a part of the playroom and part of the bedroom?
Right.
Would come out?
Would go away, right.
And?
And the discussion, the discussion, you know, from Robin was that she felt like it was a board policy, you know, or a board interpretation of not allowing this kind of a wraparound as compared to actually being part of the guidelines, it was more of an interpretation of the guidelines. So, what I tried to do back and forth with Robin and Tim was, how can we achieve the same intent, meet the same intent that, you know, again, it's below the roof line, it's clearly different material, it's clearly of its time, it looks removable, even though it's not an exact, you know, it doesn't exactly meet the wraparound restriction.
So, you're not in favor of that recommendation?
Right, right. And mainly because the program, you know, what the homeowners want for the program, you know, and that's really where, once I mentioned, once I said to Robin, the tree was a real limiting factor, and she was kind of like, okay, that might be a way to work around it.
Okay. Any more discussion? Were you making, about to make a motion, Ben, or?
No, I was just asking, I wanted to understand what the staff's, what the implication of the staff's recommendation was to the, so I could try to interpolate what, what it would look like or what it was we were-
Without the wrap.
Yeah, without. Right, right. Which I assumed, and I think to the point, it's, once you've gone there, what's, once you've gone there, you've gone there. But, okay. It's getting, getting comfortable going there, I think, and then getting, how far do you go? Alright, that answers my question, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion?
Is this a 60-foot wide lot?
Let me just, I believe it is, but let me just confirm it.
The architect is not that it is.
Is it 75? It's 75 feet wide, so it's wider than 60 feet. We normally don't allow side additions unless it's more than 60 feet or typically wider.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
So, it does meet the guidelines for having a side addition, it's just we don't, and we decided the first floor side addition was fine, but had issues with the second story.
I understand, okay. Yes, I got it.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Oh, that was a question I was saying, I'm sorry. Yes, that is correct, yes.
Go, Richard.
I will make a motion to move approval based on staff recommendation number one, but excluding staff recommendation number two. Given the width of the lot and the context of the plan and the house, I don't feel like number two is a, is a requirement on this design.
Have a second?
A second.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
2405-
2405 Belmont Boulevard.
The project at 2405 Belmont includes the demolition of an existing accessory structure and an addition. The existing accessory structure does not add to the historic character of the district, and so demolition is appropriate. The proposed addition is located to the rear of the building. The addition includes a second level to be constructed on the left side over an existing one-story addition. It will essentially be flush with the existing sidewall, although there will be a change in material and a slight offset due to that change in material. On the right side, the addition will be two stories, also proposed to be flush with the existing wall. According to the design guidelines, two-story additions should sit in a minimum of two feet to help distinguish from the new, the new from the old, and to lessen the impact of the mass of the addition on the existing house. Since the left side of the addition is over an existing porch, so again, that's kind of this side right here, no, staff is not recommending an inset on this portion because there's already the existing addition that does not set in. However, staff does recommend that the addition sit in two feet on this left side of the house, I'm sorry, on this right side of the house. The addition meets the design guidelines in terms of height, scale, percentages of open space, roof shape, rhythm of openings, setbacks, and known materials. Final staff review of all materials is recommended. Staff recommends approval with the conditions that, one, the applicant provide information about the material, design, and dimensions of masonry, foundation, windows, doors, roofing, trim, and railings, and two, the right sides sit in, sit in from the existing sidewalls by a minimum of two feet. With these conditions, the project meets the design guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Any questions to staff? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on his behalf?
Okay, Manuel Zeitlin, architect. The, again, this is another one I've been working back and forth with Robin and Tim on, trying to come up with an equivalent solution. The, and can you go back to the, I guess, go back in, go back, keep going, oh, that, now go one forward? No, let's see, yeah, that one's good. The, I believe the guidelines say that a change in, is it step-in or materials? I'm not sure.
For, and that's, a change in materials, and that's typically for a one-story addition, we have allowed there not to be a step-in when there is a change in materials, like from brick to hardy plank or, you know, wood to differentiate between the old and the new. Two stories, we usually like to see some sort of inset, yeah.
The, and so, I met, let's see, the night before, I guess this middle was due, Tim, Robin got me, set up a meeting with me and Tim at the site, and, and the original design, if you look at the, sorry, if you look at the elevation of the new house, of the addition, the roof line came all the way over to the ridge of the existing house, and the reason we, we really can't step that wall in two feet is because it's in the middle of the master bedroom, and so all of a sudden you'd have a, basically a bed wall that would be, you know, eight feet long, step in two feet, you'd have another, you know, the other half of the bed wall would be eight feet long, so in that bedroom, you wouldn't have a, a straight wall that you could put the bed against. So, what we did, what Tim and I worked out instead was to actually, instead of letting that roof line, that eve line carry into the existing houses, actually to break it and, and have a small saddle roof connecting between the, the slope of the existing roof and the, the new addition as a way to, you know, achieve the same intent of that stepping in, that, that because that roof form is so distinct that it's clear what's old and what's new, which is the intent of that, that step. And the other, the other piece of this is the, the addition you see is pretty, is really far back on the house, and the adjacent house, I think, is about five feet away from that property line, so it's another situation where you really can't see the, even see this from the street approaching, you know, approaching it from the side. So, so Tim, you know, he's not here to agree, but, but he felt like this was a good solution because it expressed that break and made a real clear distinction between what was new and what was old. And also, we, again, in the original one, we had done just a continuation, the existing siding on the house is, is aluminum, I think it's a vinyl siding, so we're replacing that with, on the side with hardy plank, smooth hardy plank, and so originally, we had continued that smooth hardy plank on the addition, so in that conversation with Tim, we changed it to the hardy panel, so there was a, again, a real clear distinction between what was existing and what, what was new. Thanks.
Okay, any questions to applicant?
Manuel, are you, how are you detailing the connection between the hardy plank and the hardy siding?
We really haven't gotten there yet, but we could create some kind of a reveal or some, you know, something like a, you know, maybe a channel, you know, four-inch-wide aluminum channel or something to give a clear shadow line between the two.
I guess that's kind of where I was leading.
Okay. Alright. Any, anybody need, no, I'm just kidding. Closed public hearing, discussion? Richard? Only because you're sitting next to me. Only because you're sitting next to me. It's your turn next time.
I will make a motion. I will move approval based on staff's recommendations, except for number two, that it be treated, it not require a two-foot setback, but it, the design require a reveal or point of designation between the new construction and the old construction. In some manner, that's acceptable to staff.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. 1402 Paris Avenue.
1402 Paris Avenue is an application for the demolition of a non-contributing structure, which was a duplex that was built circa 1960, and staff finds that the structure does not, is not historic and does not contribute to the historic character of the district, and therefore finds its demolition to meet the design guidelines. The application, then, is also to construct a new single-family structure on the lot. Because the existing structure does not contribute, no, I'm sorry, already said that. The structure will be one and a half stories tall, 32, 32 feet from the peak to the grade, and 36 feet wide, similar in scale with historic houses nearby. The form of the structure will resemble a side gabled bungalow with a two-story dormer on the front slope of the roof. The massing of the structure will be primarily in the lower story, with its bulk diminishing as the height increases because of the gabled roof. Staff finds that the height and scale are compatible with the surrounding historic context, and the proportion of open space that would remain is appropriate. Staff therefore finds that the application meets guidelines 2B-1A and 2B-1B. Let me, and just, here's a side elevation. The primary exterior material in the new structure will be cement fiberboard siding. The trim, including corner boards and wood casings, window casings, will be cement fiberboard, and the columns and railings will be wood. The structure will also have a brick piers on the front porch, a split-faced concrete block foundation, and a fiberglass asphalt shingle roof. Staff will need to approve the brick color and texture, as well as the roof color, prior to purchase and installation of these materials. The house will have aluminum clad one-over-one wood windows, one-over-one wood windows, which is an appropriate material for new construction. The window pattern and proportions are generally compatible, but in order to ensure that the upper-story windows are in proportion, in proper proportion to lower-story windows, staff suggests that they also be double-hung or that the casements have divided lights rather than a single large pane. I'm just going to flip through some of the, the application setbacks, orientations, roof, and utilities all meet their respective sections of the guidelines. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with the condition that staff review the color and texture of the brick, roof material design and color, and the location of mechanical and utility connections. With this one condition, staff finds proposal to meet the design guidelines for new construction in the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. And I don't believe the applicant is here, so.
I've got a point of clarification.
Sure.
For staff. There appears a discrepancy between the paper-submitted copy and the exhibit on the screen. I think it's a print, perhaps a printing error in that some of the windows, they look like they may want to be one-over-ones, but some of the lines didn't print.
Right.
And certainly, the large picture window at the front would, would not be something we'd want to see and would not be approved in this district. And you may not be able to see that again on, the pictures on the screen are, I hope, correct.
Yeah, and I'm sorry for the confusion. I believe what was printed before you were the original drawings, and we've since worked with them to revise the window pattern, so what you're seeing here on the screen is currently what's being proposed and what we're recommending approval for, because you are correct. What you see in your, in your packets, that type of picture window is not something we would want to see.
And you additionally commented that the upper windows would have either a divided light or be one-over-ones.
Right, correct, yes.
I'm confused, sorry. The drawing, the drawing shown on the screen, the windows on the bottom are...
The windows on the bottom are what are currently being proposed, and staff is okay with that, that type of window design. The windows on the top, we would still like to see them be one-over-one, or at least have the appearance of one-over-one, even if they operate as casements.
But that's not part of your recommendation?
I apologize. It's not, but I can amend our recommendation to include it should the, should the application. It was something we had discussion with, and it's in the recommendation, but somehow did not get in our recommendation summary, so if the...
So we should, maybe we should, if we...
If the commissioners feel that it should be, those would have a double...
Put it in our, put it in our motion.
No, this is very particular, but in looking at this, and I was reminded of our tour of approved projects, and I've seen this happen on, this is a constructability thing, where the porch rack will be built, the porch is poured, and then the porch rack is built, and you come down with a column, and then all of a sudden, this brick pilaster, then the drawing looks bigger than the base of the column, suddenly becomes not bigger.
Right.
And, and/or it gets lichenstone applied to it, and it looks really horrible. I mean, just in terms of proportions, a very particular thing, but I don't know how you, as a staff, how you make sure that that doesn't get screwed up.
I mean, a lot of it is doing...
It's important that it not.
Yeah, doing the inspections and, you know, working with them as it's under construction, because with all projects, it's what's submitted, we approve, but then it's the execution of the, of the design that...
Okay, so we heard not too long ago, the key word was adjacent. That is missing in this. This is, this is compatible, is that right?
Right, I believe, let me just double-check, but, let me just look at the, the design guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood. This is a different neighborhood than the one we saw before. It does say, new buildings' height should be compatible by not contrasting greatly with those of the surrounding historic buildings, so it does not say adjacent.
All right, here and get a motion.
I move approval with the condition that the applicant submit an additional, or new front elevation showing either casement windows with a divided light and, or a specification for a one-over-one window on the upper level, and that the applicant makes sure that the brick piers, in fact, are able to be constructed as drawn when the house is framed.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 522 Ackland Park Drive.
522 Ackland Park Drive is an application for the construction of a new primary and accessory structure in the Richland West End Addition Neighborhood Conservation District. The site has never been developed and is currently vacant. Here's a general map of the, of the vicinity. The outlined area basically shows, pretty much everything on the map is part of the West End District, the West End, Richland West End Historic Zoning Overlay Addition District. But what I've outlined in blue is the immediate context, and everything within that outline is either non-contributing, because it's a structure that was built after, you know, the historic character of the neighborhood, and many of the structures within it are, were built within the last five to 10 years. So you can just see here from the map that the site, which is pointed within the arrow, there's very little immediate historic context, so in order to look at historic context, you have to look at either Murphy Avenue or Greenway Avenue. So here are just some of the photos. These are, these are new construction, new building that was built prior to the overlay being enacted in 2007, but they're all, they're along the same stretch of Ackland Park Drive. And here are some of the other larger new developments. On the top, those are multifamily developments. The one on the left is on, I'm sorry, the one on the right is on Ackland Park Drive, and the one on the left is, I'm forgetting, Hillsdale Avenue, the one on the left is Hillsdale Avenue. And the bottom picture is directly across the street. It's a mid-century structure that does not fit within the historic context. So in order to look at how the site should be developed, staff and the applicant looked at the historic context along Murphy Avenue, which is what the structures are on Murphy Avenue, and, and on, I'm sorry, the top structures are on Murphy Avenue, and the bottom structures are on Greenwood Avenue. So the proposal meets all base zoning requirements for setbacks. However, the proposed location of the garage adjacent to the house is not typically seen in historic neighborhoods. The commission typically asks that garages be placed behind the house in the rear, or, you know, in the rear of the site. However, in this instance, staff does not find the proposed location, staff, I'm sorry, does find that the proposed location of the garage meets the design guidelines for several reasons. One, the lot is unusually shallow compared to lots on Murphy Avenue and Greenway Avenue, where the historic context is found, and that shallowness of the lot restricts development of the site. Two, the development of the rear of the property is further severely restricted because of very steep berm. Directly behind the site is the railroad tracks, and there's really not much, there's really no buffer in terms of the property line, from the property line to the railroad tracks, so there's a very steep berm leading up from the railroad tracks. Three, we find the location appropriate because there's really not much historic context in the immediate vicinity, and therefore, the location of the garage will not significantly impact the historic character of the, of the neighborhood. And four, finally, staff finds that the garage is, you know, because it's detached from the house, is subordinate to in height and scale, and is pushed as far back as practical on the lot. For all those reasons, we find the location of the garage, which is atypical and probably wouldn't be appropriate on most sites to be appropriate in this instance. The garage will be accessed via a new curb cut and driveway at Ackland Park Drive. The applicant has agreed to the condition that we mentioned, the staff recommendation, that the driveway be single-width and then fan out to be double-width to get to the double garage. I believe, I don't know if you can see on your screen, but I believe what's on the screen shows the single-width driveway fanning out. Here are the front facades. The primary structure will have a maximum ridge height of 29 feet 11 inches, and will be 33 feet 4 inches wide, 46 feet 10 inches deep. These dimensions, I'm sorry, these dimensions fit within the range of heights, widths, and depths of historic structures along Murphy and Greenwood, Greenway avenues. The garage will be subordinate to the primary structure. It'll be approximately 21 feet 10 inches tall, 21 feet wide, and 27 feet deep. Both structures will have side gable roof forms with a 10/12 slope. And here are the side facades. Staff finds that proposed window openings on the primary structure are generally twice as tall as they are wide, and maybe the proportions for historic window openings. In addition, there are no large expanses of wall space without a window or door opening, except for on the left facade, which is the facade on the top of the screen. But staff finds that there's, it's okay not to have window openings, because that portion where there's not window openings is really hidden behind the garage. You can't, you can't really even see on this elevation, you won't really be able to notice it much from the street. And here is the rear facade. Both structures will be primarily clad in smooth-faced cement fiberboard with a 5-inch reveal, and will have asphalt shingle roofs. The primary structure will have a split-faced concrete block foundation, and its windows will be wood. Staff asks that a condition of approval be that staff review and approve a brick sample, asphalt shingle color, all window and door specifications, the material for the front porch floor and steps, the material for the rear deck and railing, and the design and material for any front porch railing if one is installed. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions. One, that staff review all final materials. Two, that the utilities be located in either the rear of the house or on the side facade in the back half of the house. And three, that the driveway be single-width. And again, the applicant has already agreed to the single-width condition and has already submitted revised drawings to that point. And I believe the applicant is here.
Okay, thank you. Just like to speak before the, well, I guess first, are there any questions for staff? State your name and address.
My name is John Elder, John E. 3 Construction Services. First time I've been here, I wanted to take an opportunity to introduce myself to the, to the commission. Wanted to also take an opportunity to express my gratitude to Melissa, Robin, and the rest of staff who worked diligently with both myself, our homeowner, and with our designer architect, Preston Quark, to make sure that we've tried to come up with a design that would be both functional for our homeowner and also be in the spirit of the historical area over there. Wanted to express that, obviously, we are in agreement with their recommendation and hope that y'all see it the same way. We are available for any questions y'all may have.
Thank you. Any questions to applicant? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion, or motion?
I move approval of 522 Ackland Park Drive with staff recommendations. I'd also like to note in the motion that where this project doesn't specifically meet guidelines, or the, to the letter, meet the guidelines of the Richson West End Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay, as was made in the record by staff, that the immediate context is certainly considered. In motion to approve.
All in favor? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, I have one point.
I just, this is for Fred's sake. When, when they go out to inspect and things are underway, if we approve the recommendation as outlined here, it specifically states that the driveway be single-width to at least the front wall of the house. In the revised drawing, which I think is fine, and the staff is happy with, it's taking it to the front porch, not the front wall. So if, if the commission would entertain a amendment to that motion to where recommendation number three state the driveway be single-width to at least the front porch.
I'll second the amendment. All right, and we have an amendment and a second. All right, to the, on the floor, motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Amendment carries now.
And amendment carries.
Well, no, that was a vote on the amendment. Correct. We now need a vote on the amended motion.
I'm such a chair, okay.
We're trying to keep going.
I appreciate it. Good thing you guys are here. Okay, so now we're voting on the actual motion. Okay.
Amendment motion.
Yeah, amended motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
104 Fifth Avenue South.
So 104 Fifth Avenue South is in the Broadway Historic, Historic, yeah, zoning overlay. You may remember this as it's been before you several times. It started as a violation in July of 2009. The previous owner created multiple rooftop additions without preservation or building permits, and this issue, or, you know, the illegal work has been tied up in court since 2009. There is now a new owner who will remove the unpermitted additions, including the stair enclosure, which you can see on the left, and the railing and a rooftop bar. The new owner is also proposing a new rooftop addition, alterations, and repairs. The alterations include replacing all existing nonhistoric windows with new gelled wood windows that match the existing dimensions and design. Some secondary windows will be blacked out and others frosted. In addition, a bricked-in window opening will be restored. A rear slash side door will be replaced with a solid metal door. The windows and door are not original, and the window openings of, and the window openings to be changed are secondary, so staff finds that these alterations meet Section 2H3 and 4 of the design guidelines. The existing terracotta cap will be repaired and replaced in kind where necessary, meeting Design Guideline 2K1. The applicant is also proposing to clean and re-point the brick. To meet Section J2 and 6 of the design guidelines, staff recommends the conditions that the brick not be sandblasted or cleaned with abrasive means, and that a flexible mortar made from mixing hydrated lime, cement, and natural sand be used where necessary. Further, mortar should match the historic mortar in width, depth, color, raking profile, composition, and texture. No lighting or signage is proposed for the application at this time. The applicant proposes replacing the existing storefront, which is not original, with a contemporary storefront... contemporary storefront that is similar to historic one with wood bulkheads and windows and transoms of clear glass. The design of the storefront has what appears to be stacked transoms. Staff recommends one row of transoms above the top floor of the door line, and the applicant has already agreed to this change. Since the exact configuration of the original is unknown, this approach meets the design 104 Fifth Avenue includes two attached historic buildings. The north building, which was originally a residential structure, sits back 5 feet and 8 and 1/2 inches from the south commercial building. To meet the required 30-foot setback, any rooftop additions would need to be located approximately, in approximately the rear 5 feet of the north building and the rear 10 feet of the south building. The roof shape, height, and depth of the north building is somewhat unique for the district. The north building has at least, has the least amount of depth for a lot of any other structure on this block. It is the shortest building on the block and among the shortest in the district, and has a low-sloped gabled roof. Only a handful of buildings in the district have gabled roofs. Because of these unique conditions, staff recognizes that a lesser setback for rooftop addition is necessary to allow for the rooftop use. On the north building, the closest portion of the addition to the front is a glass railing set just behind the ridge of the house and rising approximately 1 and 1/2 feet above the ridge line. Approximately 2 and 1/2 feet beyond that is the start of an open steel trellis that rises approximately 8 feet above the ridge. In addition, mechanicals will rise approximately 4 feet above the ridge but are setback approximately 6 feet from the ridge. A metal wall to shield the view and noise of the mechanicals from patrons will rise perpendicular to the ridge and approximately 7 feet above the ridge. Because of the open nature of all the elements and the narrow depth of the building, staff finds the rooftop additions on the north building to meet Section 6H2. On the south building, I'm not sure if I have the rights, I don't know. On the south building, the tallest portion of the one-story proposed rooftop addition will rise approximately 9 feet above the parapet wall. The enclosed portion will sit back from the front wall by 32 feet, more than meeting the design guidelines requirements of a 30-foot setback. However, overall, the addition begins only 8 feet back from the front wall. The portion of the addition closest to the front is an open railing that rises 1 foot above the parapet wall. Staff recommends siding this wall back from the ridge a total of 2 feet to assure that it's minimally visible, if at all, and the applicant has agreed to make that change. Due to the shallow depth of the building and the applicant's ability to place the tallest and bulkiest portions of the addition to the back, staff finds the project meets the design guidelines. The materials meet all the design guidelines. All materials are appropriate for the historic building or new construction in the district and also meet the design guidelines. With the condition for the transoms, staff finds the project meets the design guidelines for material and design. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the conditions that, one, the glass wall sit back 2 feet; two, the storefront not have what appears to be stacked transoms; three, the brick not be sandblasted or cleaned with abrasive materials; and four, a flexible mortar made from mixing hydrated lime cement and natural sand is used where necessary; and finally, mortar matching the existing mortar in width, depth, color, raking profile, composition, and texture be used where repointing is necessary. Staff determine that because of the unique conditions of these buildings, an appropriate location for any structural additions is between the ridge line of the south building and the rear of the buildings, as this location minimizes visibility and does not interfere with the character-defining features of the building, and that a setback of 8 feet is appropriate for rooftop railings as it minimizes visibility. With these conditions, staff finds that the project meets the guidelines for rooftop additions and the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. And I don't believe the...are you the applicant? The applicant is here.
Any questions for Melissa?
Could you explain the, sorry, the glass wall? Which glass, the 2-foot setback?
I believe, and I'm sorry, this was Robin's project, so...
Which glass wall is that?
I believe it's the glass wall. Well, it's hard to see. It's the rail, yeah, it's a railing, so it's about a 2-foot railing, and it rises about a foot to 2 feet above the ridge line or the parapet line.
That's just the one that we see above the north building? Is that correct? Maybe the applicant could clarify that when he...
Yeah, I'll defer to the applicant if you want to come up here. I can...
Is the railing moving on the north or the south building? There's a glass rail behind the bar, Hunter, at the, behind the serving area of the bar at the ridge of the north building. And in the south building, which we went round and round on before, 8 feet is what they're showing, and I think they want to go to 10, so that it's not visible from the street. Instead of it being setback 8 feet from the parapet wall, it adds another 2 feet to that setback, I think is what I heard. If that clarifies.
Excuse me. There he is. Right, but he was just saying 8, now change to 10.
That's what I think. That's what I think I heard.
Not the one that's over the north building?
No. Yeah, and that's what Melissa just looked at, I'm pretty sure. But I don't, I mean, I think the one in the south building's more visible, but, whatever.
So did the commission have further questions for staff in terms of the...
Can you point on screen where the recommendation, number one, the glass wall sit back 2 feet? Where that glass wall is in the floor plan and...
This is the glass wall right here, right? Yeah. I believe it's on the north building by the ridge of the, by the ridge, setting that back an additional foot. Right now, it's set 1 foot from the ridge, and we would want it setback an additional foot from the ridge to minimize its visibility.
And in the elevation, that is the white band that runs parallel to the ridge there? Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
She's the north building.
And it's kind of, on the, on the plan on the left, it's kind of that dark line that's closest to the ridge.
Okay, so this one says what you're saying.
Yes.
So does that, I guess when the applicant speaks, you can let us know. You can just, he's okay with it.
You can come on up, Manuel.
I'll leave the drawings up here if you want me to make first.
Just if you have any, we've been working real closely, we've been trying to, you know, incorporate everything they've asked for, so we agree that going back another foot would be a good thing on that.
Another foot or 2 feet?
You were saying it was a total of 2 feet back from the ridge?
Yeah, they're already setback.
It's already setback 1, so it's giving 2 now.
A total of 2?
Yeah.
Okay, so another foot. So looking at the floor plan there, you're comfortable with another foot will work?
Sure.
Okay. So I guess the other question, you're...
We're great.
You're great with all the recommendations.
Okay. Thanks, Manuel.
Okay, thanks.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move approval, staff recommendation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Do we, Melissa, do you want to do this other business, or do you want to wait till Robin?
I will defer to Susan, who has an update on the other business.
Okay.
I believe this is referring to the legislation that was penned before the Metro Council that would allow for greater flexibility in those persons that are chosen to sit on the Historic Zoning Commission Board. That legislation was on third reading on last Tuesday night, and it did pass third reading as amended by the planning commission, well, as amended according to the recommendations that the planning commission had made. And what they had made was a recommendation to amend the language so that it said downtown code instead of downtown core. I think there's a slight difference in the mapping as it relates to that.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Motion, I mean, meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Second, yes.